All right, let's take a break. We're going to have a call to meeting in order. Okay, upon our return from closed session, we'll announce the direction for staff was given. Need anything else today?
No report black.
That being said, then we'll begin our opening ceremony with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Gallagher, would you lead us today?
We start, "A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Please reiterate standing for the invitation. Almighty God, we pray this day for your ever enduring guidance. We ask you to clothe us in wisdom and fortitude that we may dispense our knowledge of facts intelligently among all humanity of whom we serve. Amen. Oh, I did skip ahead, didn't I? We will move to agenda approval addition and now our deletion.
Mr. Chairman, if you permit me, I'd like to ask that you take H1 off the agenda for this week and we will re-attend. There have been some late developments and we'd like to readdress those before we go on.
Thank you. So I'm looking for approval of agenda with that modification. Hammond moves, Gallagher seconds. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At this time then, we'll move to public comment. Does anybody that wishes to address the board supervisors in public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to an un-agendized report by board members with Mr. Gallagher.
Okay, so last week I attended the fair board meeting. Of course, we had lots of discussion regarding if we're going to have it there or not. So we're still going to discuss that for the next couple of weeks, I think. And also attended the air pollution control board meeting.
Mr. Alba.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just ask the chairman to make the memory of Tom Poitras and Jackie Vardis.
Mr. Hammond.
Oh, I attended H-Pod for all public and community districts. Meeting, they hired an interim for Pat Williams. I guess we got him for three months. It's kind of a critical position for us right now, but we're going to fly that position. Other than that, not much. I would like to donate a discretionary $100 to the Doyle seniors.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Mr. Hammond?
I did go to air pollution also last week. We have a 395 coalition meeting tomorrow via Zoom or something tomorrow. So we attended that and that's about it. There's John Clearstein at Ferguson Group, is who they have as a consultant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hammond. I attended a, well, virtually attended a PSA 2 meeting, the area aging council working on the nuts and bolts of that one was the staffing for the ombudsman program for our local nursing homes and care facilities. And then I also attended last month from the CER Community Action Agency. One of the exciting parts of that was part of the discretionary funds that come out of that are going to be used at the city's community garden and also on the farmer's market regionally. Because one of the big pushes from that agency is for more resiliency in our local area by growing. While we all know that there's too short a grow season for our area to ever be self-sufficient in terms of growth, what I believe that COVID has shown us more than anything else is the vulnerability of logistics networks that currently feed us and clothe us. And so the more of that that we can take care of ourselves, the better off we'll be overall, so.
All right, having moved through that, I think we can move to the consent calendar. Is there anything, anybody want to pull from the consent calendar? Well, then with G6, what I'm looking for is a remainder of the matter. Do I have a motion for? Gallagher moves. Alba seconds. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. G6, six then.
Well, I thought I would catch something with Mr. Burns, and that tries to catch with Mr. Alba quite often. So on the agreement in the second paragraph.
For G6?
Yes. I saw it and started laughing.
Yes?
Second paragraph, the, all the dates, the list of dates. If 2091 is correct, then we don't need to redo it. So that needs to be corrected.
Well, that corrects. Let's just, yes, it can be corrected if that's your pleasure. What we're proposing to do with this modification is to remove 7.1 in its current form and replace it with the 7.1 that's set forth there. But if we had already had an agreement to 2091, we'd no need for it. Would you, I'd have to check the date on that to make sure what I'm putting in place is the correct one.
I'm sure that was in that draft.
Oh, I'm certain of it. I just wouldn't want to guess it's what it should be.
Yeah.
No one wants it should be. You want to bring it back? I think I'd love to do that.
I'll move the table over this far.
Thank you.
Looking for a second? Have Hill seconds. All in favor of tabling? Aye. Opposed?
Could catch Gallagher.
In that case, we'll move.
Speaking of you when I thought that. We can catch Burke or something.
We shall go ahead and move to H2 then. The video system. Mr. Burns, thank you.
Well, Jason Helwood is present, and I asked him to be here. H2 is a policy which intends to deal with the placement of video cameras on county properties. And who can do that? How to access, who could look at that material, and the line. And so.
How would they?
Who can approve their installation? Who can approve their placement? Who can approve the looking at the footage that's seen? Whether it's, you know, public common areas or common areas and private work cubicles or not. And so Jason's here, it's, incidentally, it's not an easy topic. But this is something that is, you're being invited to consider adopting as county policy. And consequently, it was published in draft form, so the draft can have a for you, to all of the bargaining units for their comment on indoor feedback, and we received none. So.
Your point for asking was none?
The bargaining group is correct.
We did have some interaction with bargaining units prior to the development. I'm just surprised that this isn't, it's not here already. You know, when I started reading it, I thought, wow. But anyway, I'm glad we're doing it.
Good morning. Jason Helwood with Laston County Information Services. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think that's an appropriate statement, that I'm surprised we're not here already. There are some departmental policies that have been put forward. Those, and that seems to be the trend across the state. So the one thing that I would encourage you to know about what we're trying to do here, what the county law policy, which is limited, as Mr. Burns stated, to those cameras, camera positions, that A are on par and centralized by D map, so they come back to all their data centers. B, they also are in public areas. So these are public cameras that will be subject to RRs. We have a separate set of cameras that are not in public areas, of course, those in the jail, other law enforcement areas, and those that are not on our centralized type of network that, as this is drafted, do not all apply for this part of policy. So these are a specific type of camera, not camera type, but review, intended to enhance employee security, protect camera assets. And as I was going through it last night, just a final time, I do think that it would have been helpful had I put into language that it actually is protecting our citizens as well. But please be advised, there is no other county, to my knowledge, that has drafted one on this type of basis. They are department, everywhere else. And if a lot of it has to do with nobody wants to touch it.
Define public placement.
If I can go there and I can pull out my own personal camera on my cell phone, that could be a public location. So if it's in a common area, it's a little bit, so let's take the government center for example, we've got a lobby in there, we have cameras in there. We don't necessarily have policy guiding the positioning of use, release of that information, how to process those public records and processes. So that's the intent of what this is.
I like the fact that you had prohibited sharing in there as well. I know lots of these kind of things that end up on some news channel unauthorized. And so I was happy to see that part of it as well, so good job with that.
Thank you. Well, I think most of the sanctions based on the control process where it has to go through county council's office or CAO's office, depending on the circumstance, it really is controlled upon the ISB. So ISB is really the only group that has access to that. However, we do have some displays with other employees who could certainly snap a picture of the rendered video on the wall. And that is, as you can see, is prohibited.
So basically, this is employee safety and security?
Yeah, I thought about last time. I recount about four, four to five incidents that we've had where we've actually used the system to different degrees of result, but a lot better than saying we didn't have anything. Some certain things that were happening, you know, families and break-ins, those kinds of things that happened at some different, so still haven't topped the flag yet. That would be nice.
Any other questions? Mr. Alba.
So inherently, the request to put in cameras needs to be by written or written request by the department. And what happens if there's an area that ought to have one, the department head doesn't want to put one in there, is there some CAO or sheriff can maybe override that for the public safety and employees?
I would say a couple of others.
I'm sorry, I, what was the question?
If there's an area that maybe needs a camera and the employees would want it with the department head, does it, is requested? Is there a committee over it by the CAO or sheriff or somebody? I mean, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, I would imagine the most persuasive efforts of the most talented CAO would have means of letting the department head know they need to put a camera in this sensitive public common area and have it be the department head's idea. That would be my guess.
Okay. And the other question I had was in 8A, you talked about releasing the video and getting a piece meal form, what do you mean by that?
So these are pretty large files. It's high definition videos, so they consume a tremendous amount of resources. So for example, if there were, if we were looking at an incident, that would narrow it down to like maybe 10 minutes. That 10 minute file, that 10 minutes of rendered video is such an enormous, large file, it would, if you brought in optical discs, you know, CDs, DVDs, you would be using several DVDs to fulfill that 10 minute video release, several CDs. So they're highly intensive when it comes to the storage that's required. So that's the piece meal. So it would depend on if it were for internal type use, we might move that through the network, possibly, or we might upload those to a larger type of recording storage device and sneak it in across the network by car, plug it into their computer and have it land there. Our retention, because of the volume of data, retention is not to exceed 60 days. Because that would be cost per kid to the county to have to sustain any activity on that, even after the. Does that answer your question?
It does. And do we have the capacity to store, how many cameras can we afford to store one on this with the current system? Are we going to have to upgrade it? What's the cost of that going to be?
We will have to upgrade the system at some point in time. We're currently running two, essentially two recording systems and it's about 10, about 10 cameras per system. The more cameras we get, the fewer days of retention that we have. So it's just a direct relationship between how much stuff you're capturing, have what frame rate, have what data rate, and how much storage that gives us. But the intention is not that somebody would come back two weeks from that and say, hey, I had an incident two weeks ago. If you don't know something is wrong within a short period of time.
I think all the incidents that we learned about within days, not hours.
So the idea would be that you deal with it and treat it immediately and get that rendered video packaged in a way that somebody else can maybe use it, be it sheriff's office or destination or whatever, CAO or county council.
Any other comments? Any public comment on this issue? Looking for a motion to adopt the policy? Gallagher moves. Alba seconds. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, well then we will move to our 10 a.m. time certain, the recognition committee. Shall we start with Kelly Cody? I don't have the, oh. Hi, guys. Thank you. There you go. I believe, is this the answer? Oh, this is it. And then Larry?
Oh, Kelly. 35 years.
Now, there's got to be somebody.
Did you get a double jacket for that?
Good job, Larry. So Larry obviously is our public works director. He does a good job of keeping us funded and basically keeping us working and projects going. I'd like to thank Larry for all he's done his last 35 years here at Lassen County.
I just had a couple things before Larry sits down. Larry has probably seen more boards of supervisors, more executives, more county councils than anyone in the world. 35 years is a long, long time. Lost in a career.
It's just fine like that, by the way.
Or, however it must be done. Anyway, Larry's seen an awful lot of improvement to the county in terms of this road project, the public works, and all sorts of economic fiscal circumstances from good, bad, and worse. Been through many, many disasters with floods and blizzards and fires and has always been able to maintain this calm approach to run the department that I, as an executive, I really appreciate it. I just want to say thank you for all of your time and all the efforts you've given to the county over the last 35 years. I was hoping we'd get out like 35 more of it. Doesn't sound like that's our.
Thank you, Richard.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
So Kelly Cody came up and then spirited away without any opportunity to recognize her. She's still here? She went out? Oh, hi, Kelly. So you know that the child support division used to be part of district attorney's office? When I started in the district attorney's office in 1993, I was the child support prosecutor. And I don't know what year Kelly worked at family support, what it was then called. Yeah, what year was that? Yeah, it was still in the district attorney's office. And then I think around the year 2000 or 2001, legislatively, they took child support and made it its own queendom. And I had occasion to work with Kelly in child support. I think Kelly started pretty much at the lowest level in the department as an account tech.
No, a legal clerk.
A legal clerk. And worked every rung of the ladder up and is now a boss. And does a great job. And it's always a pleasure to interact with and always brings us one. So thank you, Kelly.
Lassen County is well served by their department head. With that, we should move on then to H3 Housing Navigator Program. Morning ladies.
Morning, partners of the boards of the H34 and the housing programs. And you're here to present today on a couple of different programs. The housing advocate program is a program intended to help young adults, 18 to 21 years old, secure and making housing, the priority given to young adults in the top priority. Paying aside resolution Lassen County has allocated $3,135. The funds will fund housing advocates for the child operation. The role of the housing advocate is to act as a housing specialist to assist young adults with their pursuits of locating available housing, overcoming barriers to limited housing. We are requesting that the board adopt a resolution and authorize the CAA or Des Moines to accept the agreement.
Mr. Gallagher?
So how many years has helping some very much money? So I was wondering when I saw that, exactly how many individuals can help?
You know, I don't have the number off the top of my head. It depends on what each individual needs. Some individuals may just need a little bit of help looking for housing. Others may more expensive housing takes advantage of it. So really, it depends. I foresee a fund like this being used in conjunction with other funds. So if the fund runs out, we would hope that other funds are still in work.
So some of this would be used, like if they didn't have, if they didn't have their gout payment to run, who would be used for that or?
So this one specifically, the housing advocate, is intended to fund the housing takes advantage piece, the other reason, because the one we'll talk about in a little bit has some support. I'd like to add also that this age range, 18 to 21 years old, is also covered by non minor penalties in both the infancy and in delivery. So that does cover a lot of kids, non, non adult, but non minor penalties optional. So if they don't want to remain under court jurisdiction, which we don't have under many of those, they tend to want to remain under court jurisdiction. If they don't, then we've got to do something to help them, those kids that are in old times, definitely, that would be able to support.
Mr. Alba.
You know, I got the, kind of the same question as Chris. I mean, this is, though I appreciate the name of the program, what it's trying to do and everything, but the dollar amount, the number of, even if it's one person, I mean, this is, it's almost a waste of time. Why don't we give back to the state and, you know, it's a program to make somebody feel better, if at the state level, is all it is, because the amount of money they're given to do anything is miniscule. I mean, how many hours in a year does this could provide? You, Steph?
I think that every little bit counts. As I said, we can combine it with other funds that we have, so every little dollar that we get makes a difference, you know, even if it helps one young adult. If it funds time to help a young adult a little bit more than we could before, I think that's important.
But my point is, is why not take this money and put it to a program that's already in place, or develop a new program that just, it's going to dole out pennies? This program here is even paying your salary for the month.
So yeah, I understand what you're saying, and the state allocated us this funding, though I have no say over what happens with this money if the money goes back to the state, you know? So my thought would be to use this fund because it's been given to us, and these are to help us, you know?
But I guess my point is, they're getting, yes, they're giving this money under this quote, new program is just to make somebody feel, I mean, I don't feel good because they developed this program. All right? But is this money, is it going to pay for your time, effort, paperwork, and everything you go through to maybe help one kid?
So the paperwork.
Because that's all the more time you're going to have.
Right. The paperwork for this purpose, their funding is very minimal. There was no application. We pulled out a request for funds and then there's the rest of the shit. So the process, the time that went into this has been minimal. The state is not requiring as much. The recording requirements are very minimal as well. So I feel that the time compared to other funds has been relatively minimal.
Basically, it was a block grant?
Correct. We were allocated enough.
I'm not forever giving money back to the state because, you know, they limit our money quite severely here, so, you know, block grants oftentimes don't take much to administer, and so, yeah, I, even though it's not much, I agree with you. I thought the same thing. I wonder how much paperwork we took to get 3,185 dollars from the state.
Well, the state's going to put together a block, we have to put together something that we can use, there's going to be a, to that.
But you know that we're not going to change the state.
I'm supposed to stay on kids, Eric.
Well, only for that, that one foster child that got housing, then that would actually be, if you look at our homeless total, since that total is only, according to our last time count, like 140, one person out of 140 is actually a significant percentage. And so I understand your point, I think it's a good one. Generally, I think in this specific program, it sounds like this specific program could be of use if she uses those tidiness of an hour to get one child or
If she uses those pittance of an hour to get one child or three children homes, then it's worthwhile.
Most kids are lost, most of us in that age group are lost anyway in the system. That's sad.
Well, give it, give it to the college and let them put it toward their dorms or something. Sort of get some good.
Well, she can't, she can't make that decision. That would be the legislature that makes that. Any other questions, Congress? Public?
Well, I, yeah, I feel like I need to say something. Just because the work that they use is incredible. And I just wanted to say that we right now are piecing together every single dollar we can get. And we know the general fund is going to be horrible, the state funding next year. And so with this funding, I'll bet it is a real small dollar amount. It's part, we can apply it to the time that they have and, you know, we're going to really have to figure out how we can keep even our staff and some of the programs. And so while this is allocated toward that service, we can actually use it. If we gave it back to the state, they'd probably just give it to, you know, LI or something, which is, I mean, if they need it, they need it. But for us here, it lets us at least, although we'll be spending some of our other dollars to take care of these youth as well, but any dollar we can get right now, I think we need to really see how we can help the kids we have in our community now. So that was just kind of my pitch, but, you know, they do amazing work and a lot of it is sometimes, you know, just on their time. And so it's nice to get them paid as well.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other comments?
I would love to like H3 and 4, the others, if they're the same deal.
Why don't we just finish H3 up super fast here? One assumes if there's, if I have a motion.
I will, I will move as H3.
Second. All right, head, no moves, hammer and seconds. All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
No.
Motion carries. Transitional housing program?
Thank you. The transitional housing program is a program intended to help young adults 18 to 25 years secure and maintain housing, a priority given to young adults forming the foster care system or in the probation system. Pending a signed resolution, lasting funding has been allocated $6,400. Uses of this program funding may include identifying and assisting housing services for the population, assisting the population secure and maintain housing, so that could be the deposit for events, improving coordination of services and leading the community resources within the child care system in the home's continuum of care, and providing engagement and outreach and targeting to serve those with the most civilian needs. We are requesting that the board adopt a resolution and authorize the CAO for his duty to execute the agreement.
Questions, comments, Mr. Alba?
Same thing again. Different program, no amount of money just to make somebody feel better after doing something. I mean, why not put this money into one program, get it out there so that there's some money there to do something? At least this program will pay for your salary for the month. I mean, whereas the other one wouldn't, but at least you get a month worth out of this one. And they expanded the age on this by four years, this is 1825 to 1821. I mean, here again, I mean, I know it's not you guys and all these programs about people making themselves feel good because they developed a new program so they can put on their resume. And it's just silly and people wonder why people get so mad at Sacramento. Politicians and lobbyists because they just develop silly stuff like this because they're getting out and actually doing some real true beneficial debt. That's my two cents.
Mr. Gallagher, do you...
So it's all have my piece here for a minute. At least we can give 10 people rent assistance to get into a place with this money, whereas the other money wasn't very much. So it's just too bad the state doesn't intend to make this more equal in some way. I'm sure they think they, they're equal when they do it by the population, but this doesn't give us much leverage to do it, but at least it'll give 10 people rent assistance if that's all we need. So I will make a motion that we adopt the resolution and authorize the CAO to award this duty to execute the agreement.
Gallagher moves, head, please. I will add that if this $6,000 is leveraged so that the average population doesn't end up in our county jail, then it would be money well spent. Because if this money were not spent putting into rental assistance, then instead they would spend that time in our jail and in our system, which would cost $100,000. So in some ways, there is wisdom here from the state in that if we can take a small amount of money at the right moment, then it is worth $100,000 to the state general or to the county general fund, I would point out. And so I think we need to be careful that we make sure if we're going to get small amounts of money, that we use them at the appropriate point. So that is the charge that we give you ladies, is that you take this money and prove that it is of value and is of worth so that hopefully we reduce our jail population and reduce the pressure that we have on our public safety right now. So thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Oh, you're right. I'll give it back to the public then. Do I have a public comment on the matter? Okay, now we move. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Karen liked the rent system, so.
And now we'll move to H5. Pete, was that you today?
Mr. Chairman, I'll start off while Pete's coming up. This is an amount of money worth talking about. As the board knows, we've been engaged in this courthouse project for a few years and we're getting ready to move into H2. And the purpose of this side is to authorize architectural additional services for my office to work with that H2. And Pete's got more detail on it.
So you guys all, we were in here awarding the contract with H1, getting our H2 project. And tie in this is the H2 design work. As outlined in the board memo here is to include the whole of our site, actually all our site that we worked on in pursuit of. It's also going to be the elevator installed in the secondary to have a rest out of the building. All that's going to be fully functional. We will do some basic infrastructure when we need to basically tenant improvements. So plumbing, mechanical, electrical, basic stuff will be done there. We'll have new electrical service directed through the building, kind of a little tight between two buildings, kind of share a service there, so it'll be dedicated along there as well. This is quite a bit more than we spent for H1 design work. That's approximately $185,000 there. This is also a significantly greater amount of design work going on here than we realize in all the different disciplines, mechanical, electrical, water tank, structural guys. They're all going to have a pretty good part in this project. We kind of, we pick over numbers, Sean and I have, of different disciplines, you know, what we give to. So, you know, options are there. We could always go out to an R and P, go to see if we can find a better deal. For doing that, we've had already invested some of the work with this front line office. Doing that, we probably have to back up a little bit and kind of review some of the wheels we already had going and also with the late time. So we, you know, we're comfortable with the work they've done, you know, in the course so far. There's one, work's been really good. Bids are really good based on that scope of work that we've done. If there's any questions specifically that you have coming, I can answer them. I'm still pretty happy here.
Will they make their timeframe?
So, yeah, we've actually been looking at this building, this scheduled house, since we started with H1. We've always had H2, but we've been looking at stuff and trying to make our targets. So yes, right now, this is the nearest one that we might know of a start date for the H1 project. They've already kind of pulled their resources together, their elements, you know, anticipating that they will be awarded the project. So if it is awarded here today, they'll be ready to get the ground right since, you know, the calling of the day. They're very cognizant of our timeline and, you know, we have weekly progress meetings with them. Mr. Sean, you, anybody else who needs to pull in, whatever it is. And so we're always hammering that schedule and where are we at and what do we need to do looking forward and everything, so.
The reason why I ask that is if we can get it completed early, maybe we can get the construction finished out there, you know, we'll have better bids because of the way the economy is.
Absolutely, yeah. So we're, except we...
Put their feet in the fire.
They don't, yeah, yeah, they know we're working with you as far as that, that's going to, to kind of take advantage of the situation, you know? It's going to be pretty impactful to us in a neighbor's way, but maybe there's something that we can, you know, get out of it on this side of the case.
Any other questions, comments?
No. Good job, Pete.
Then I'm looking for a motion. I'm going to make a motion to engage. Hammer and moves, head, please. Public comment? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Egan, you have anything?
Just one item I wanted to mention to the board, the Elmond power, Haydenville Power Line project. I haven't forgotten about that. Unfortunately, Elmond has to date failed to make any progress in terms of meeting the county to find an alternative to their obligation to remove the line, which disappoints me. We're still reaching out to Elmond and trying to, you know, continue to invite them to try to come up with an alternative plan, but as of yet, they haven't. The COVID issue is kind of a convenient reason to not get a lot of things done on some agencies. I don't know if that's the case here. If there's, continue to be unsuccessful in making progress, I would probably bring an item back to the board to address that.
All right. Move to adjourn. Thank you, folks, for being here today.